Hi, good evening. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for the City of Temple City to order for September 5th, 2023. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Mann?
Here. Tonight for the invocation, we have Councilmember Viscara will lead us in the invocation. Please rise for the invocation and please remain standing afterwards for the pledge.
Dear Lord, we have reached the end of summer and are about to enter the fall season. We are grateful that we were able to get through winter, spring, summer as a city safely in spite of record rainstorms, nearby forest fires, and most of recently a hurricane. And there's other things. We continue to thrive as a city and provide public activities for our citizens such as our Camellia Festival, concerts in the park, and all the other activities you see us involved in, especially from our Parks and Rec people. And soon, the Moon Festival. Please give the council the wisdom to provide continuing leadership in the coming months. For all of these things, we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
And now our city attorney, Mr. Greg Murphy, will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, please remove your hats, face the flag, place your hand over your heart, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should we do the Little League pledge also? No, just kidding.
All right, and speaking of the Little League, tonight we have a very special ceremonial matters presentation. We have invited the Temple City American Little League eight-to-ten-year-old All-Star Team to our meeting tonight. We'd like to take this opportunity to recognize all the players, the coaches, the TCA Little League manager, and of course, all the families that make this possible, to congratulate you on all of your accomplishments for this year. The eight-to-ten-year-old All-Star Team won the section tournament this year, and they are also the undefeated champion of the district tournament. So that is incredible. And this was an excellent suggestion by Mayor Protem Tom Chavez, but earlier we spoke with Mr. Roger Tafoya in the back. I know he's the announcer at Live Oak Park, and we thought it would be really cool to have him come to the front. I'd like to invite him to the front of the podium and announce all of our, all the members of the team. Tonight, we have a special presentation for all of you who are part of the team. We have certificates of recognition, and so if I could have Mr. Roger Tafoya come up with us, as he announces each player, the city council will be presenting these to each of you, and we'd like to get a photo up front right in the center. So please.
Okay. This is a certificate of recognition. First one goes to Gavin Garcia. And our manager, Robert Robles. And Coach Manny Rios.
Okay. So this is kind of an inside joke that we, over at Live Oak Park, have been doing for years. We actually have a certificate for a young man by the name of Joe Gama. I think this Josh is behind all of this. Joe Gama is not here tonight. In fact, he's probably about 25 years old right now. Married with children. But we'll have to give this to Josh, I think. He'll hold on to this and maybe present it to him one day. This was a young, a young man who played actually at Live Oak Park, not for Temple City.
From Los Angeles.
But from Los Angeles Little League. And every year, we always bring him up because the name, when you announce it, Joe Gama, it just like kind of rolls off. Anyway, so it's an inside joke. But so Josh, you'll have to come up and take this. Come on up here.
Presenting Joe Gama, accepting the award.
Come on up.
Ready, everybody? On three, one, two, three. One more. Everybody look here first. Right here, right here. Awesome, okay. Everybody look over there. And now here. And now here. Go ahead. Hold the cameras. Here, here, and the last one. There you go.
Okay, nobody leave yet, okay? Please, nobody leave. Okay, nobody leave yet, okay?
We take out Tom and this.
Yeah.
No, we're saying that was a great campaign purchase.
Yeah, I know. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Mann for these presentations tonight, of course, and recognizing this great young set of ballplayers. I asked him if I could have a moment after we make these presentations to bring up a couple of things. First of all, of course, thank you for the caps. I didn't even get one of those this year. Now I have one, so that's awesome. Thank you so much for bringing those. We'll wear, we'll wear them with pride. So each one of them will get one of those. So I think we have enough to even give the city manager and city attorney one too as well. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that's cool.
There's different sizes.
Are there different? Oh, there's.
Are you saying my head is fat?
All right, we'll have to figure out what size. We'll have to figure out what size we are first.
Yeah, it is a little tight. It would probably fit you.
It was extra small, so I don't know.
Okay, so I know you guys all have homework to do, or maybe you have practice to go to. I don't know, but.
Extra small.
I am honored to make the following presentation. I have known this young man for a number of years, and he's been a true servant of the city in all the time that he has put forth in helping the youth of our community in Little League and other endeavors as well. Joshua Kelly has been the president of Temple City American Little League for, now, I had a follow-up on this, Josh, and you have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's seven years now? Is it nine? Nine years. He's been the president of Temple City American Little League. And let me tell you, those of you who don't realize, that is a tough job. I know, I've been there. And, you know, we'll see Josh not only acting as president, but, you know, working in the snack bar, cleaning the bathrooms, just, just a number of things, just to make sure the league runs. Between games, he's out there doing the field, just everything that it takes to make this league run well. And I can tell you, in my other life as assistant district administrator, we always get such great comments, and I've made these comments to the council as well, when other cities come to Temple City to play at Live Oak Park, they just give nothing but thanks, and they're amazed at what a great facility we have. And a lot of that is due to Josh, of course, and his staff and the work that they do at Live Oak Park. So I thought it would be important, Josh is stepping down as president of Temple City American Little League. Sarah, I don't know what you're going to do, having him home all that time, but probably figure something out, but maybe we'll, we'll get him over here on the city side, you know. Parks and Rec is always looking for somebody to take, you know, spots. But, you know, Josh, I just thought that it would be nice to recognize all your accomplishments, both as a coach, as a manager, and of course, as the president of Temple City Little League. And so we have for you tonight also a certificate of recognition, recognizing your work and your commitment, working with the youth of our community. Although it does say seven years, I got that from Mylan, so we have to blame Mylan for that. So we'll just have to cross that out and put a nine, or you can just write a nine in or whatever.
Make a seven a nine.
Yeah, we'll make a seven, the seven into a nine, but, but thank you so much. You know, part of my job as a district administrator is to go and oversee the tournaments. The one, of course, and just a couple of things about the team. This team, as it says, was undefeated in district, okay? Didn't lose a game. In fact, didn't even give up a run, I believe, until the second to last game, if I remember correctly. They were pretty dominating. And then they went on to section, and they did well, they won that as well. I believe, correct me again, Josh, but this, they've gone the furthest of any eight-to-ten-year-old All-Star Team in the history of Temple City American Little League. So that's quite an accomplishment. So congratulations. Not only a great set of kids, but a great set of parents. I didn't even have to go over there and tell them to quiet down many, well, maybe once or twice. But it was, it was a great tournament here at Live Oak Park. They won the district, and then they won section. I think it was in Azusa? Yeah, and so, you know, it's a nice thing. We see, all of us are sure have seen the Little League World Series on TV, which of course is the 10-to-12-year-olds, okay, which is the next level up. And hopefully, one of these days, we'll see you guys on TV too, huh? Couple more years together, and that'll be nice. So that would be awesome, and then we'll have to have a really big celebration, so. All right, but Josh, again, thank you, if you don't mind coming up, and maybe we can get a picture with the council as well. And oh, of course, no man can do it by himself, and that goes for Josh. Sarah, Sarah, his wife, has always been there the whole time. She could have been president as well, I think, okay? No question about that. So Sarah, come on up. All right, there you go.
I want to dress nicer. Ready, everybody? One. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Let me move out of the way. Okay. There you go.
Good job. Or you can stay. It's up to you.
Oh, you know, should we see if the manager can say something? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, if, I mean, at this point, I'd like to invite the manager and coaches, if there's anything you'd like to say, please, please come on up to the podium. It's your moment.
Tell us about your travels. Yes.
So my name's Robert Robles. I was the manager this year for the team. I've had the privilege of coaching these kids for the past three years, and we've won section, no, district, all three years. So we're three-time district champs, and for me, it's really just been an honor and something that I really enjoy doing. I have two sons on the team. Sorry.
Did great.
I wasn't prepared for it. But, you know, this is something really special for, you know, for us, and like Tom said, you know, the goal is for, you know, to just go a lot further, and we're hoping to do that. So I just want to thank you guys for, you know, inviting us out here and having us here. And I know it's really special to the kids and to us. And thank you, parents, for everything, and yeah, can't wait for next year.
All right, thank you. By the way, I think it was after the third win or second win of the tournament in district, when, you know, the kids get together and talk after the game, I believe that's when I went up to them and I said, guys keep winning, and we'll have you to the city council meeting, and you'll get on TV and everything. And they were, oh, wow, that's great. So I don't know if that was any incentive, but it did come true. So, so when you go home tonight, I don't know, will it be on tonight, I think? Okay, well, tomorrow, you'll be able to watch yourself on, on cable tomorrow, or you can stream it online, on YouTube. Yeah, so there you go. So good job.
All right, well, again, congratulations and thank you all for, for coming. It's, it's our privilege and honor to have you here at our meeting as well, so thank Okay. All right, well.
Thank you.
This is the part where everyone leaves, right? We'll give everyone a moment.
Thank you. Exciting for them.
You responded to June's email. She said you responded to her email.
She did. You want to see what I wrote?
I'm taking a well-deserved and well-needed vacation for the next three weeks. If you would like to meet with me at the end of the month, happy days.
All right, now we'll continue on with all the other exciting matters on our agenda. Next is a public comments on items not listed on the agenda. We do have one request to speak from Eric Ortiz. If you could please come up to the front.
Hello, Mayor and city council members. I am Eric Ortiz. I'm a tenant counselor that works together with the Healing and Justice Center. HJC is a community-based nonprofit servicing Los Angeles County, but we focus in San Gabriel Valley.
Would you, could you speak more directly into the mic?
Is that better over here?
Yes.
Yes, that's better.
Sorry, I'm not used to these. Our mission is to support BIPOC individuals, communities, and organizations by creating safe, healing, and connected spaces. We believe that if we're going to build strong communities and interdependency, healing-based relationship strengthening approaches must be at the center of everything that we do. Our programs and services include a free tenant counseling hotline, nonviolent parent education classes, regenerative conflict resolution training, and movement-based healing practices. Our advocacy currently focuses on tenant rights, affordable housing, and digital equity, which I'm here to discuss today. The COVID pandemic highlighted several community needs, especially around internet and broadband access. If you had wanted to find resources for food, employment, COVID information and vaccines, to go see your doctor, go to school, work, or pass the time on Netflix, or even attend a city council meeting, you needed access to broadband. And it's not just about access, but also about having the equipment and literacy to be able to access and navigate the internet effectively, which is why we join Digital Equity Los Angeles. It's a coalition of over 50 organizations from different fields, such as education, health, housing, environmental justice, and more. The coalition researched and highlighted discriminatory pricing practices of Charter Spectrum, which services over 80% of LA County. We found that they were offering much lower promotional pricing in areas like Malibu and Rancho Palo Verdes, rather than in lower-income areas with denser populations of people of color. We published this in a pricing disparities report and began to urge the county board of supervisors to investigate and stop these discriminatory practices. You can find this report at digitalequityla.org. We are asking city councils all across SGV to help us close the digital divide by writing a supportive letter to the LA County Board of Supervisors, urging them to investigate the discriminatory practices of these internet service providers and to take steps to ensure all of LA County has equitable and affordable access to the internet. We've also provided you with data and fact sheets outlining these disparities, as well as sample letters, I believe ones drafted by Duarte, Roseme, and Alhambra. These sample letters to draft to the board of supervisors, and we are open to meeting with you to answer any questions and discussing further. We hope we can have your support to ensure all of your constituents are connected equitably. Thank you very much. I see from item number 10, you guys understand the importance of good internet, so hope that we can work together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other speakers at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment. Next, we have a consent calendar. All items may be approved in a single motion unless there's any items that council wishes to pull.
Is there a correction that we're making?
Yes.
No, that's, that's item today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Today, not, thank, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu? Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes. Next, we move on to our public hearing, item 8A, which is establishment of an expedited nondiscretionary multifamily review process and a library of prototype architectural designs for multifamily projects in the R2 zone. So I will maybe hand it over to our city manager, Mr.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council. Before you tonight is the culmination of many months of work and a lengthy study session we had back in June, of which the council gave us direction to move forward with objective design standards for our R2 zones. This action tonight will codify that in our municipal code, and we will move forward with that. In addition, this also meets one of our goals within the housing element and generally speaking to some of the directives that the state of California has given in helping spur and removing barriers to the development of multifamily, multifamily housing in our city and throughout the state. So with that, Mr. Cohen, who's been the lead project manager throughout this effort, will give you an overview of what we discussed at the special meeting in June, and any questions that you may have in consideration of implementing these objective design standards for our R2-only zones.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Good evening, Mayor Mann and council. This evening, you're being asked to consider an ordinance that would establish an optional review process for multifamily projects in the R2 zone. Just to give you a brief background on that project, this was the result of a grant that the city applied for back in 2019. We were awarded $160,000 in 2020, and as I mentioned, or as Mr. Cook mentioned, we had brought it back to you for review in December of 2022, and then we had a study session in June of 2023. The purpose of this project is to provide expedited review for projects in the R2 zone while continuing to achieve good design, design that's compatible with the existing built environment in the city. One of the goals is to provide clear and consistent direction to developers and to help meet our state-manded housing goals. And then a last goal of this ordinance is to comply with SB 478, the Housing Opportunity Act. The overall purpose is to provide an optional, expedited, nondiscretionary process for review of multifamily projects in the R2 zone. And to do that, a project would need to use one of the architectural prototypes that are in the library that we will show you this evening. We will be adding this review process to the zoning code in Section 9-1C-6, Specific Procedures. It should be noted that there will not be any public hearing in this process. It's an expedited process that's nondiscretionary. However, the planning commission will continue to review projects that have subdivisions. Now, back in June, there were several issues that we discussed with you that, that day. There were, if we summarize, there were four of them. One was applicability, substantial compliance, public noticing, and then the prototype library and how we would expand that over time. The first issue, applicability, you gave direction to us to limit it to the R2 zone. We had previously presented you with options for both the R2 and the R3 zones, and the direction that you gave at that meeting was that we could continue with the R2, and then maybe in the future add R3, depending on how things go. We will still keep using the R3 models as education for the public. We will show them at the counter if people want to get ideas, but for now, it will simply be limited to the R2 process. The other issue, substantial compliance, as you know, we have many lots in the city, so it's very difficult to match these prototypes to every single situation you'll find in Temple City. So we know that there's going to be modifications that need to be made. The solution that we came up with for that issue is that we will provide applicants with a 16-point checklist that will help them to know what we're expecting to see on a project, and then it will help staff to verify if a project substantially complies with the prototype. And that checklist, we included in your packets this evening. The other issue that was discussed was public noticing. As you know, this is nondiscretionary, and so the public can't really provide input or feedback on the project. However, we will still give a notice out to, to neighbors within 100 feet of a project, notifying them that the- notifying them that this project has been approved, and then providing them with contact information for the city and also for the applicant, so that if they have concerns, they can reach out to us. And then the other issue, the prototype library. It was decided at the meeting that the best solution would be to bring any additional prototypes to the Planning Commission, since they have experience with reviewing those types of projects. So if we want to expand it over time, add other styles, other different lot configurations, we will bring those to the Planning Commission for their review. And then just a really quick review of the prototypes for the R2 zone. These are based upon commonly sized lots that we found in the city and are based upon the existing development standards that we have in our zoning code. And each of these prototypes includes a site plan, a floor plan, elevations, and at least at this time, we're limiting it to two styles, Spanish Colonial Revival and Mid-Century Modern. And as I mentioned, in the future, we can add additional styles to it over time. So this is the front elevation for the Spanish Colonial Revival prototype. It's a two-story building. And then this would be the Mid-Century Modern version of that. And then this is the site plan. For the R2 prototype, everything, all of the units are detached, with each one with its own two-car garage, with an interior courtyard that's shared by all of the tenants in common. There's no underground parking in this configuration. And then this is the, what we would provide applicants in terms of providing details for their design, and this is details that would go on the exterior of the buildings. Then lastly, SB 478, the Housing Opportunity Act. This is something that was brought up to our, brought up to us by our consultant that we need to update our zoning code for compliance with this. So piggybacking on this project, we are including this small addition to the ordinance. Basically, SB 478 limits, sets limitations on floor area ratio and minimum lot size in multifamily zones. And it only applies to projects that are between 3 and 10 units in multifamily zones. And just to give you an example, Temple City's maximum floor area ratio in the R2 zone is .5. We don't have a limitation in the R3 zone. So the FAR would definitely be increasing for projects with this many units. The state law says that cities may not impose floor area less than 1 for projects between 3 to 7 units, impose floor area ratio less than 1.25 for projects of 8 to 10 units, and that we may not deny development because it does not meet minimum lot size. And we cannot use lot coverage requirements to prevent projects from achieving allowed FAR.
Quick question.
Yeah.
What's our current FAR for?
Yeah, our current FAR is .5.
.5?
Yeah.
So it's, so it's going up from .5 to 1 or 1.25?
Right. At least for projects that are in this, in this range, either 3 to 7 or 8 to 10.
Is that just for R2?
It would be in any multifamily zone.
Any multifamily zone.
Yeah. And then lastly, the environmental review. Staff finds that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15305, minor alterations to land use limitations. And our recommendation is that we introduce the first reading by title only and waive further reading of ordinance number 22-1068, and that we schedule the second reading of this ordinance for September 19th, 2023, and then schedule the adoption of the resolution, 225639, for September 19th. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mayor, one other question. This, what we have in front of us is a voluntary process, right? I mean, an applicant, let's say they have a different concept, they don't have to follow this, and with that, they would just submit their plans, just as what we're doing now? And would there be the discretionary hearing, all that for? Okay.
Yeah, that is correct. Everything, the entire process will remain the same for any project that someone wants to submit that's not under this, this new expedited process.
But the FAR part would, would apply to any new development, right? Because it's state law?
Yes.
Okay, that means double the density essentially, or higher?
Yeah, and because that is state law now, we have to enforce it presently.
Wow. Okay.
I have a follow-up question, please. Just a follow-up on Councilmember Yu's point. So the goal of this is just to kind of expedite things. If somebody wants to just not have to go through the full process, if it substantially complies with these guidelines, then they're good to go and save time and money, I'm assuming, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
I have a follow-up question on, you had mentioned that new designs will go first through the Planning Commission for review?
Mm-hmm.
How would that come about? Is that because of a request by some developer, or, I mean, how do we, how do we decide at some point, we wake up one day and say, hmm, I think maybe we should go to the planning with this new review? How is that going to play out?
Yeah, no, it would be a staff-driven process where we would budget, put money in the budget to have the, an architect come and develop some additional permutations of the design, so either more styles or more lot sizes.
And is that because you maybe have gotten requests from builders and developers?
Yes, and when we brought this forward to the Planning Commission, they said, well, we shouldn't stop at just two designs. We should, we should add on to that. So their hope is that every year we'll add on to the existing library.
So that's, that's probably what we're going to do, is every year kind of review it?
Yes.
And just like anything else, the Planning Commission will simply recommend and then come to us for final approval? Or is it going to stop at the Planning Commission?
Right now, the way it's written is that it would stop at the Planning Commission. But if the council wants to, that's an easy change. We can make that change to the document.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem giving the authority to the planning, that's what they do, but at the same time, I think something like this would have a substantial impact on the city, and maybe it's something that at least should have our stamp of approval on at some point. I don't know how the council members feel about that, but.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
What one solution might be that we can put in the resolution is that modifications will be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission, but the council can call them up for review. So that if you have a substantial number of complaints, or you don't like what the commission, or you want to investigate a little bit further, you can call it up to review as well. That might be one way of resolving it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And what we would do as well is that we would notify you, so once those, once those came up, so that you, as, as the council can do, a call, a call up for review, we would, we would let you know, and then if the, and then it gets us through an easier process in order to do that as well. Call for review, in this case mechanically, would be not an expedited process, but something that we could easily bring forward to you as well.
Yeah, my just concern is that we kind of stay a little bit in the loop, because, you know, if somebody has a question or a problem with some of these, they're not going to call a planning commissioner, they're going to call a council member. And I want to be able to say, oh yeah, I was aware of that, or, yeah, you know, so.
And we're going to report back to you on this as well.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll get the reports, I'm sure, for the planning, like we always do.
Absolutely.
All right, I'm okay with the risk, ask for review.
Are these two the most commonly brought forward by people coming in?
Yes, right now, the Spanish Revival is very common. We also get a lot of applications that, in the single-family design, that are kind of what we would call more of a prairie style. We're seeing a lot of brick houses with kind of very long eaves, overextended eaves. That's a popular style. It hasn't been quite exactly translated into multifamily yet, but that might be the next one we look at.
Has there been any interest from any recent builders looking at something with porches, with front porches?
Well, there is a requirement right now in the single-family zone that there has to be a porch, and there is in the multifamily zone as well. I think the front door has to be set back at least five feet from the front elevation.
But, but a small porch, right? But not really like a?
You're talking about those wraparound?
Like a large?
Yeah, like a large porch, it kind of brings community, you know, you see in the South, yeah.
You see those, but those are all mostly on the R1, right?
Do we see any of those coming in in R1?
Um, not more, not in the ranch style, not really. We have seen some larger front porches, but really, the, the impetus or the push behind the new multifamily designs is to really create an internal courtyard space. That then becomes kind of a shared space for the users of that. And it kind of creates that, and then there's an allowance within that courtyard that a certain percentage could be carved out as a private space, a private patio, so that there's kind of a, a public space, and then a semi-private space, and then there's, they're in their own unit. So we think we're going to see, and we have seen within the applications that we've gotten, that there is that sense of a porch or a patio inside the courtyard.
Okay, thank you.
I think the only one that would probably, probably benefit from that front porch would be the house in the front only.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wouldn't comply with the other ones.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Yu?
Um, no, no more.
Councilmember Star? Just one, one question from me, just so I understand this 16-point checklist. This checklist will only be used or offered if someone elects to go through this process?
Yes.
So it would not apply if someone did not choose to go through this process?
Right. This is only for people that want to go through the process, then we would hand this to them and say, when you're ready to submit, go through this and make sure that your project meets with all of these standards.
Okay.
And I think as a follow-up to that, there was a question last time it came up, who's going to make that determination? That falls to you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Probably by, by proxy, your staff as well, right?
Yeah.
And I think we, we may have asked this at the last time we, we discussed this item, but maybe correct or refresh our memory. If I recall, the expectation in terms of the number of these types of projects that would actually occur in our city is not a lot, right, in the, in the R2 zone?
Yeah, with, probably within the last two or three years, we've only been seeing two or three applications per year.
Okay, so that, that's, that's very, very little.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I guess that, that kind of ties in with Mayor Protem's earlier point. If something does come up, we'll likely be kept in the loop on it, because it's considered unusual compared to, say, the number of R1s that we, we would get.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Is that primarily because of the, we just don't have those lot sizes to do those kind of things?
Yeah, the, we don't have a lot of R2 properties in comparison. We've seen a lot more development in the R3 zones recently, over the last few years. We've seen more interest in the R3 zone. It might just be a function of the economics right now that people are just sitting on their properties. Really, we have, we've seen a strong decrease in multifamily development overall, and a lot more interest in accessory dwelling units.
All right, any more council questions?
I have one extra one.
Sure.
Colors. I actually didn't see in the presentation, were there colors that the city suggests? That certain palettes that you would accept? Or is that up to anybody to select?
The library doesn't specify a particular color. It simply gives illustrations of those. So anything that's in that same genre would work. It's not going to be precisely, it needs to be tan, or it needs to be white.
So if I come up with a design, paint my building purple, and that?
It's probably not going to fit in the, definitely not in the Spanish Colonial Revival.
That would be always a discretion call, staff, as a style, stylistic call, on your point.
Yeah. But most of our applicants are looking to get through a process quickly, and they're trying to raise as little, how should I say it, public debate about their project. So coming up with color patterns and schemes that are going to raise interest in their project is not very common.
Yeah, personally, I like to think that maybe you can consider, maybe in the future, adding some color palettes.
Okay.
So, you know, a little easier for.
Okay. You can look at that.
But I'm okay with, well, we're not, we shouldn't be talking about comments, yes, sorry. I'll save those.
These balconies that are referred to in the picture before, so those aren't really usable balconies, those are more for just design?
That's correct, yeah.
That's so you can water the flowers.
Yeah. It provides a lot more light in the room, because instead of just having a window, the, the window goes all the way to the floor, so it provides a lot more light in the multifamily building.
So that raises a good point, though, Fernando, is that, so this picture shows plants on the outside of that wrought iron, of that balcony. Is there a way for those people to water those plants from that, is that a window or a door, or what would, what would be there?
Yeah, I've, I've seen openable windows there.
Okay.
Operable windows, and even sliding-type fixtures, or they can use drippers.
So that's not meant to have like a sliding door, it's more like, just that's supposed to be a window?
Yeah, it depends on how it's designed. You can have a door that opens into the room.
Oh, you can.
Or if it's larger, you can, I've seen sliding types as well.
Sliding, okay, all right.
Provides nice ventilation for the occupants.
Right. All right, next, we'll, we'll open the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we'll go to final council comments. Councilmember Yu, I know you were starting to get into it, but would you like to start us off?
Certainly. Actually, I still have, just thought of one other question. The SB 478 that intensify development, do they also loosen any other requirements other than FARs? Does it? Because FAR, basically, you can build more. You can cover more, more square footage. But does SB 478 add or loosen any other planning requirements other than FARs?
Can you go back to that slide?
That's right.
It's just really about, mostly about FAR, but it also covers lot coverage as well.
Okay.
So we can't use lot coverage as a means of getting around the FAR rules, basically.
Okay, so, you know, so are the requirements still applied?
Correct.
Okay. But that's, all right. Well, thank you for answering that question. I mean, I have no, I, I think I can support what's in front of us. I think we have studied this, debated it, and worked on a lot of, worked on a lot of questions. I think it answered council's concern about at least informing neighbors, and also give the discretion if somebody who does not want to follow through, I mean, we haven't taken anything away from us, from the current process. Current process still applies, so it's just an expedited way for, to allow our applicants or homeowners to develop a site. I think it's all good. I think it's one more tool, and a toolbox without taking anything away from the current process, so I think it's a good one. And then the, the design that you proposed looked good. And I also agree with Mayor Protem, if there's an opportunity in the future, perhaps we can add one or two more styles as you see fit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
By and large, I support it. I like it. I think we should move ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
I, I think the styles are, are great. I think they fit in with our city and some of the things that we already have in the single family. I've seen already, just locally, a couple of those styles. So I think it's great. I think it, it's a win-win for both staff and for the public, because I think it allows you to maybe have some relief as far as when getting, you know, too many things at once, and, and you don't know when that's going to start up again, like the ADUs. I mean, maybe as interest rates start to go down, you're going to have an influx of people coming. So I think anything we can do to expedite this for people, save them, save them time and money, I think it, it only makes sense, and I think it's really going to help you and your staff also. So I support it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Thank you. No, I, I agree with my colleagues. I think it's a good way to move forward. I'd be excited, though, to see some additional styles come in as we go through, and I think from my standpoint, that by having added some in the future, that will prevent us from just being all one style, you know, and not so much cookie cutter kind of situation. So I'm looking forward to not only these, but what we, what we develop in the future, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I wholeheartedly concur with all the comments that have already been said, so I won't belabor that point. I, I will just say one, one comment, just in, in general, I think it's good practice for us as a city to find ways to cut down the, or expedite the process of, of applications in, in general. the process of applications in general. And I understand there's a lot of variables that go into the process. And there's, you know, from staff's standpoint, you see a lot of variations from the ones who really know what they're doing to the ones that don't. And there's various challenges to that. I know we're not here to talk about, you know, R1s, but as we kind of alluded to earlier, R1s are likely the majority of the applications that come through for review. And again, not to debate that point, but I think in general, if we hold to the practice of trying to help people to the finish line, I think that's just good customer service that we want to provide to, not just our residents, but any business owners, property owners, et cetera. So I support this. And I have no further comments. And we'll entertain a council motion for this.
Mayor, I'll move to find ordinance number 22-1068, exempt from CEQA. And then introduce for first reading by title only and wait for the reading of ordinance number 22-1068. Schedule the second reading ordinance number 22-1068 for September 19th, 2023, and schedule the adoption of resolution 22-5639 for September 19, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no objections, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Sternquist?
Yes.
Council member Viscara?
Yes.
Council member you?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mann?
Yes.
Also, may I read the title of the ordinance?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Ordinance number 22-1068, an ordinance at the City Council of the City of Temple City, California, amending Title IX, Chapter One of the Temple City Municipal Code to Establish and Expedite it Non-Discretionary Multifamily R2 Zone Review Process and Associated Zoning Code Amendments Pertaining to Objective Development Standards.
All right. Thank you. And I just want to thank staff for all the time you spent on this. So we appreciate that. It's been several iterations. So thank you. All right, next we go to unfinished business. We have none. New Business 10A, Internet Services Agreement with Spectrum Enterprise for Increased Bandwidth of Internet Connection for City Hall and Ethernet Private Line to Live Oak Park in the City Yard. And hand it over to our city manager.
Mayor Mann and members of the council, I respectfully ask, we pull this item. There are some terms that we still need to take a look at real quick and clarify. We would bring this back to you at the second meeting of September.
Okay. But since we have this item on the agenda, I do want to give council an opportunity to ask any questions they may have.
Certainly.
And perhaps when you do bring this back to us, that those questions, if there are any, can also be considered. So council, any council questions? Council member Sternquist?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Is Disney involved in this at all?
I, not to the best of my knowledge, sir, no.
Totally separate situation.
I have to look at some SEC filings and others, but I don't think so, sir.
All right. As you know, Spectrum has been in the news lately.
It's a tough week for college football fans.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Council member you?
Just a related question, because I think we also get, I mean, to a point that was brought in the public comments period earlier. Perhaps when we bring this item back and maybe bring another related item that is why we only have so few internet choices within the city. I mean, we always answer, well, that's, it's a monopoly, it's infrastructure cost, but that's also to the point that was brought up by folks that there is a general sense that everyone should be, should have that access. So maybe, maybe not directly with this, maybe when staff bring back, we can bring back some discussion.
Certainly. Council member you?
Council member Viscara?
I don't have any questions now.
All right. I actually have one or two. My first question is, I might get this wrong, but we currently don't have...
Sorry.
...on cue. We currently don't have public Wi-Fi access, or we do?
We don't.
We don't?
Correct.
All right. Because I know that's just been a point that's brought up in past discussions from years ago, but we've never actually done that ourselves. So that means this, the, this Ethernet private line we're talking about is exclusively for staff use?
Correct.
And for the cloud-based systems that is alluded to in the staff report?
Yes. It also is used by our Wi-Fi system throughout the city, well, throughout the facilities.
Okay. And then kind of to dovetail off of council member you's point, is Spectrum the only internet service provider capable of meeting these demands?
It is not the only internet service provider. However, based on the pricing, a lot of the companies who are on their own tend to rent or lease the lines from other providers. AT&amp;T is also another provider. One reason I would like to stay with Spectrum because they've provided all the infrastructure for us and all our cables and network system are already in place. But that's one reason why I'm pulling it, because I'm looking at the exact terms of any renewals for Spectrum.
So if we were to go to another company, Spectrum would take all their equipment, all their lines out, and we'd have to replace all those?
They would leave it there. However, they will take the equipment that we currently have. We have a router in the, what we call dungeon, where our network systems are. Potentially, other companies would need to come in and build the pipeline again, either for free or charges for cost. Spectrum has charged us no cost at all for getting the fiber in. For example, the new City Yard access, all that fiber pipeline was done for free by Spectrum. We were not charged for any of that. So other companies potentially are able to come in. At the last RFP we had with this, Spectrum was the lowest price only because, of course, they own their own lines. And then other companies tend to, like I said, lease their line, and then that'll add up to more costs for us, but...
Mayor, may I just clarify my earlier comment? I mean, there are other internet services providers, but fast internet for the entire Temple City seemingly is only Spectrum. AT&amp;T fiber is spotty. For example, I checked where I live, there was no other option but Spectrum. Right. So that's what I wanted to snap the brain back and maybe, maybe there are ways to resolve it. Because I, I'm sure you all get emails from residents asking why there's only one game in town, if you want fast internet.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I've observed that phenomenon in various parts of Temple City. And just speaking for where I live, AT&amp;T literally just put in fiber optic in my neighborhood about a month ago.
Wow.
So, I mean, to your point, there was a lot, very limited options for a lot of our residents. So I think that is a good question to ask.
But I think even beyond that, to me, the question is not, how many providers do
we have, but what is the service and what do we get for that? I mean, we could have 10 if nine of them aren't any good, and why, who cares? But I think probably, to me, the two most popular ones are Spectrum and AT&amp;T, I would imagine. But are there, there are other ones out there as well, smaller companies? I don't, I don't know that much about it. All I know is when I pick up my phone, I hope I have service.
And I guess my last question for, on this item is, in the staff report, it alludes to the increased bandwidth usage from cloud-based systems and other software that we as a city run. Just, again, I don't know the technical details, but in terms of our own, do we have as a city some sort of IT policy related to the age of our computer system or computers? Because, and the reason I ask this is because just speaking from my county experience, there's a policy on that side that computers are supposed to get renewed five years. But with the speed of technology, five years is actually a pretty long time. Things get outdated pretty quickly. So I just want to, my question for staff is, is the slowdown truly due to the bandwidth, or is it due to other reasons such as older computers that could slow down because they're not built for newer software or cloud-based systems? Or, I mean, there's a lot of possibilities here, but I just want to ask that as sort of like, you know, I don't want to say we're, I'm not trying to say we're not spending money correctly, but just that we're truly addressing the root of the problem.
Yeah. So I've been here a little over five years. Since then, I started updating the PCs that we've had. I think we've had two sets so far where PCs have been upgraded. So I think we only have two or three that are left that is not really used by staff. So I'm in fact going to order another set of computers or PCs to replace the ones that were ordered, I think about four years ago. So we are, for me, it's very important for us to keep updated. But in, to answer your question about the slowdown, it's really the bandwidth. We just have more employees. Our recent one is the cameras at the yard. That's taking, even though they have 100 meg of speed, that's actually taking from the city's 200 meg speed. So it's not like we have 200 here, we have 100 over there, and 50 in Parks and Rec. They are tapping into that 200 meg bandwidth. So which is why we need to really increase our bandwidth citywide, so that Parks and Rec has been the one really who's having issues. We do get issues in City Hall, but with the 50 meg bandwidth they have there, they really have slowed down, have issues with the internet. And it's not attributable to the PCs because, like I said, they've been updated in the last four or five years.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So if there's no more questions, then this will be brought back to council at the next meeting of this month.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have to take a call real quick.
Okay, sure. All right. Well, we'll take a five-minute break.
Oh, no.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're almost done with this. All right, we'll be back in a couple minutes.
Well, if the case outranks a mincer.
Here's a regular city council meeting, and we'll move on to the next item, which is an update from our city managers.
Thank you, Mayor Mann and members of the council. A few items for tonight. This past week, I had the privilege of attending along with council member you and Mayor Protem Chavez, the CJPIA Annual Educational Conference. Three real takeaways that were, I think, important. Obviously, we know that cyber attacks are a significant problem for every agency that's out there. We are not excluded from that. But as the council knows and for the member, and for the public who's listening in, we actually have a very comprehensive cyber insurance policy with JPIA that not only provides us a layer of insurance if and when a cyber attack actually caused damage, but we actually have resources with very top-notch firms, including Kroll and others, who we can go to with a 1-800 hotline and address those situations with them. Ms. Pagaras, who serves in many capacities as our administrative services director, our city treasurer, but also over IT, very familiar, works with JPIA on that. So just some good reminders and some good, and some good, just kind of usual housekeeping items that we do. And Susan and her team will make sure that we continue to do those housekeeping items to make sure that we can do all the best we can to, one, when a cyber attack ever does hit us, that we're prepared, we're ready, and we're working with our partner JPIA to ensure recovery and continuity of service going forward.
Brian, I'm sorry. When you say recovery, should we ever have to pay ransom fees? They would reimburse us?
Well, that is, that is part of, that is part of the service. We would go to a Kroll or other, or other third parties to assist us in evaluating those types of things. We're lucky that we, one of the things, as being a contract city, we do not have some of the proprietary kind of software, and most importantly, data and information that's advantageous for somebody to go after. So, but it's, that's, that's the beauty of being with JPIA is because they contract out with those services with Kroll and others that can assist us through that process. So we're not alone. That's a great question. Second was, it's an unfortunate topic to discuss, but sexual abuse and elder abuse. The JPIA is rolling out another program with another entity out of Texas that is actually going to help us if we ever get to a place of sexual abuse or elder abuse issues with our, within our programs or our services, to assist us with that process as well. They'll take a look, and actually, Adam Matsumoto, our Parks and Recreation Director, will be part of a forum and educational seminar later in October with this firm that will, that has been contracted out with JPIA to assist us with both best practices, but also things that we can look for and enhance training with elder abuse and child abuse as well. So things to look for, better training, better outreach with our community. And then lastly, as always with JPIA, you do a great job of just talking about the challenges and the employment, in terms of employment law and some of the things that we were challenged with and how complex it is to be an employer in California. It was great to see, a name that was familiar to all of you, Kelly Traynor, our own Katie Sartor, who gave a presentation as well, just to get us up to date, but also to just remind us of some of the basics as well going forward. So, great, great event as always. Well done by our partners at CJPIA. CJPIA is also helping the County Liability Trust Fund as well with support as we get through the five-year agreement with the LA County Sheriff's Department as well. And I appreciate Alex Smith, the executive director, and Paul Zaglovich, the liability manager, for his help as we go through that process. This Friday at 8:00 AM, Cloverleaf is coffee with the captain. Can meet our new captain, Jorge Mesa, was the operations lieutenant before for several years, so knows the community very well. So for those community members who haven't had a chance to meet the captain, he's a very accessible guy, and we're happy he's part of the team permanently. Lastly, the latest issue of Connect has come out. We're working with the post office right now because there seems to be a few areas of town that may have had some challenges with delivery, but you do have some, you do have copies of the latest issue of Connect, which is our special edition, 100-year anniversary. Thank you. And if you, if you don't mind popping that up on the screen so the members of the public can see that?
I got mine at home last week.
We, our staff, our staff was...
You don't mind, though?
Very good job. Staff did an excellent job.
That's Eliana Flores, our management analyst, who really did a great job. I'll flip through just a couple of quick pages for the public.
Yeah, on that note, Brian, I also want to say that some members from the Historical Society also extends their compliments to us and staff for putting this together. They thought it was great.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did a little articles, both on the humans of Temple City, the great power outage, the history of the Camellia Festival. And what was, was really cool is a four-page timeline, which I thought Ms. Flores did a fantastic job laying that out. And our last little article that we did was a little article about the first Wincles Donuts in town.
You know how many people have come up to me and didn't realize that it was the first Wincles donut we've seen?
Thank you, Ms. Qu.
Yeah, they didn't know. Took them by surprise.
So we'll be, we're, we tried to contact the post office today. We'll see what we, what other issues so that, but if anybody who hasn't gotten an addition, we have some social media posts out. We'll be happy to hand deliver that to you or get that to your house. And that's it for my report, Mayor.
Mr. Cook, Brian, just one, one more thing just to confirm, since we've been so, there's been a lot going on from the city and we have so many events. But we... there's been a lot going on from, from the city, and we have so many events. But we, we also have the High Autumn...
Sorry, one last one. Yes, thank you, and I'll mention, feel free to mention that further. Our partner, World Journal, has been our fantastic partner for the last several years. We'll be doing our High Autumn Festival September 16th and 17th. The opening ceremonies will be at 2:00 PM on the 16th, and then a, a, at 6:00 PM, that same Saturday as well, is be, will be a ceremony related to preventing AAPI hate as well. So we look forward to seeing all of you there, and we look forward for the community to come out and enjoy with our outstanding partner, World Journal. They do a fantastic, fantastic job in working with us. And again, the footprint will be similar to as it was last year. Won't be going out into the street this year.
Will not.
No, will not. World, that, and that was at World Journal's request as well, not our request. We were ready to, ready to kind of go back out, but they want to wait one more year, see, see what their vendor count looks like, see, but they'll, they've done a great job of outreach to the community as well. So you'll see a lot of community performances from Temple City businesses and other stakeholders in our community. So we're looking forward to the High Autumn Festival. And thank you, Mayor Man, it's coming up so quickly, less than two weeks from now. And, and at the next meeting, I'll talk to you about the Centennial Celebration that's coming at the end of the month as well. But High Autumn Festival, of course, we have a very busy September.
Why do we put everything in September? Nobody wanted to do anything in October or what?
We just wanted to make it a fun September, so people can forget they're back at school.
And also, there's three, three regional conferences this month as well.
Contract Cities is this coming week? Is anybody going?
League of California, Contract Cities, and JPIA is a good job.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have an update from our city attorney.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring a provision of Senate Bill 1186 to the council's attention, because it's something we're going to be working on with community development staff. SB 1186 is called the Medicinal Cannabis Patient's Right of Access Act, and luckily, there's not an acronym for that. But the act was focused on ensuring that cannabis delivery services were allowed to operate statewide. This is a bill that was proposed by Senator Weiner, who has been an advocate for medicinal cannabis. Has nothing to do with regular commercial cannabis, just medicinal. And the big focus of city attorneys and others in, in our business, when this started, or when this was adopted last September, was ensuring that we didn't have regulations that barred delivery services. It's come to our attention, and I want to thank the mayor for bringing it to my attention. I've conferred with the city attorneys in Rosemead, Alhambra, and Monterey Park, all of whom are, are members of our firm. And we're looking at it, because one of the provisions says that you can't prohibit the establishment of a physical premises to serve as the home for a delivery service. Now, that doesn't mean that they're also allowed to do storefront sales, but if they're running essentially a commercial business, where they're having delivery out away from that site, you have to allow one in, at least one in each jurisdiction. You can't prohibit them outright. To that end, as I say, I'll be working with community development staff. We're working with the city attorneys in the other cities to see what types of limitations, restrictions we think are appropriate. And that will be coming back to you probably early winter, after it goes through the process of getting the planning commission this fall. That's my update. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have council reports on ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports?
Yeah, do you want me to do the one on audit?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So council member you and I met as the audit committee, audit ad hoc, met with our principal auditor, Casey Rodamacher, with CLA. There are auditors for this year. Susan Paragas was there. Were you there? A little bit. Yeah, you were there for a little bit. Okay. It was more just an introduction, where they're getting started. Obviously, this is for the year ending June 30th, 2023. They basically kind of gave us a little background of their responsibilities and what they hope to accomplish, pretty much similar to what we've done in the past. They've already, I think, I believe they've begun the field work, Susan, I think, correct? Or they haven't started yet? They're, they're going to be starting.
They've done interim work, but they are, they, they will begin work later this fall.
Okay. And hopefully, I think the target date was completed by the end of November, I believe, or somewhere. Okay, so we'll have more, more, I'm sure, on, as we go through the process, and look forward to a good, clean report, as staff has always provided for us. So, so it was a good introduction, and look forward to getting more information. That's my report. Vince, do you have anything?
Thank you. And also, council member Sternquist and I are part of the Playground Renovation Ad Hoc Committee, and we met this past Friday. Councilmember Sternquist, do you have any comments you would like, or you?
No, just, I believe our Parks and Rec meets tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
So they'll...
Just to give feedback.
We'll give feedback on the presentation that we saw. And I, I just think it was, it was really heartwarming to see that the consultants took the council's suggestions to heart and really did a great job of implementing them. I think having our mayor on that ad hoc, and especially with having two small children, I think the feedback that you brought was invaluable to what they came up with, because I think they really did take a look at every aspect, whether it was for sound, or, you know, was a factor. But it's beautiful, and I can't wait for all of you to see it. I think it's, you're, it's going to have that wow factor, right, William?
Is that the next meeting?
We're going to try, yeah, that's, that's, that's what we're going for, but we, we'll, we'll get, we will definitely get it to you before the end of the month.
And there were just a few tweaks, I think, that even William and I thought would be best to move forward with. And I, I think that it's, you're just going to love it. William?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, what I would say is, SWA, in my opinion, did a really good job at keeping councils' comments to, to heart. So, and we're, I'm referring to the meeting where all, the entire council was able to provide feedback and comments. So, so they, they really heard us. And, and I think I, we alluded to this at our last report, because we had, we had met consecutively, pretty, pretty, and very close succession. I think the changes puts the focus back on to what's the most important part, which is the playground itself. And, and not so much, you know, when, when we were, when we saw it, the big wow factor was that, that shade structure that was just kind of, this, almost this omnipresence kind of aspect of that, of that concept. And this kind of returns the focal point to the rock and ship, which is what we were all very excited about. So, yes, I, I concur. I really am looking forward to the full council meeting on this, and hopefully, we get to proceed with it. I do want to also bring up one other point was, I thought it was great that they were able to, they and our staff were able to keep it within the, the price estimates that was also presented to council. I thought that was another important point, because part of any time we make tweaks or changes, the big concern that council member Sternquist and I had was like, okay, this looks great, but what's the price tag, right? So we, we wanted to be cognizant of that, of that concern.
Thank you.
All right. Any other reports? Then we got everyone? All right. Then next, we will go to council meetings separate from the regular agenda. Maybe we'll start on this side today. Councilmember Viscara, anything?
Absolutely.
Okay. Next, council member you.
I just want to add, perhaps, in condition that we commented on our state annual program for the JPIA in California, the Department of Sheriff's Authority. It was a very educational program, well done by staff, and then some of our staff were there as well. And I think it's just great education, very, in some sense inspirational, on top of risk, because, you know, we cannot run a city without really looking ahead to some of the risks that we might run into. So it was a humble spectacle, good educational. I wish that more staff in the future would attend as well. So it's very well organized. So kudos to JPIA, and of course, our executive leader here, JPIA council member, oh, sorry, Mayor Protem Chavez, for leading JPIA.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Thank you. Yeah, it was, it was a good conference. You know, obviously, the educational, as I've already mentioned, were, were great. I want to mention one, you know, well, a couple. Not only did JPIA put on good educational, you know, meetings and stuff, but also the, the speakers that we get are, are great. Two of the, the main speaker was, I think many of you remember, Scott Hamilton, the ice skater from the 1984 Olympics. It was interesting. He didn't really focus so much on his accomplishments, but what, his, more of his life journey, and what he's gone through as a cancer survivor. And it was a good, good uplifting speech. He did a great job, very, very personable man, and stayed afterwards and signed everybody's books. Took the time to do it and did a good job. Another speaker we had, a man by the name of, I just had it here in front of me. Where is it? Bear with me here. And the reason I want to bring it up is that it kind of mirrored what we do in the city, and I want to take a shout out to our, our deputy sheriffs. It was on active shooters. And this, this individual has a company that they run that gives seminars and, and training for different businesses and entities. And one of the questions that came up was, well, as a municipality, as a city, you know, how do we, how do we get the same training? Of course, you could hire this individual, but it costs to do that. His suggestion was, go to your local sheriff department, because usually, they can, can have that type of training. And it reminded me of what we do here in Temple City, and how our sheriffs have done exactly that, at our neighborhood watches, with the school district. And so we're kind of ahead of the game there, and we, we do a good job, I think, in that. I mean, we all hope it's never going to happen, but, you know, it does. And so, so that was a really good speaker as well. One of the, one of the educational things I went to was about service dogs. Had a little personal interest in, in what you can do, or what is a service dog. One of the reasons we didn't take tests to the conference this year is because this particular resort specifically said, "No Dobermans."
No.
And I, so I asked the question of this individual, "Can you do that?" And he said emphatically, "No, you cannot do that. If you allow dogs, you got, you can't just say, 'Not that dog,' or 'Not that dog.'" It's more general.
What was the rationale for that?
They didn't give it. I didn't, I didn't ask.
Dobermans are memes?
Well, no, it was just in Doberman. It was Dobermans, German Shepherds, Rottweilers, and Pit Bulls. No. So, of course, you walk around the grounds, and there's these little poodle dogs yapping away and trying to get at you, but, you know, that's the way it goes. But, you know, it was nice. It was, it was a good education, and he learned a lot of stuff, obviously. It was a great location, did a good job. So next year, get your calendars ready, next year, it's going to be back in October.
San Francisco?
I believe, no, it's going to be in Indian Wells.
Indian Wells.
Which is a nice location. It'll be at the, at the Hyatt in Indian Wells next year. And I think it's a second week in October, so it should be a little bit cooler down there. So, so anyway.
You haven't been to San Francisco in many, many, many years.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to do it in San Francisco. They kind of outpriced us.
Oh, did they?
It's very expensive, and then most of our members would have to travel a great distance. Although, we had a lot of members from, like, for example, Pismo Beach came down, and I was talking to them, they flew, actually flew down into San Diego and then drove up from San Diego. But, yeah, it was, it was good. And, and I agree with Vince. I think that, I would like to see more staff go, because these are the kind of conferences that are really geared to staff. Not, I mean, there's a lot of council members there, certainly, but, you know, we're there to, because, you know, obviously, for the policy decisions and stuff. But I think staff really gets a lot out of it, or at least I hope they do. I know, I know Karen, Susan, Peggy were all there, and they were at all the, all the sessions, and I think it's really geared to that. So I, I would like to see us maybe focus on that a little bit more. We did have a good group go this year, though, and it was a good group. And actually, I think, if I remember correctly, I think they said we may have had the most of, from any one city, as far as a number.
Oh, wow.
What do we have? One, one, two, three, six? I know six. But I think we had a couple more signed up at the last minute that didn't go. But, yeah, it was, it was well attended. So, but, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Just a couple of things. I, through my role on the board with Foothill Transit, was invited to attend a State of the Nation address by Congresswoman Linda Sanchez. It was out in Whittier.
Wait, State of the Nation address? Doesn't the President, United States, legally give that?
But that's exactly how it was labeled, State of the Nation.
Interesting.
Which I thought was interesting. But there wasn't a whole lot of State of the Nation given. But the takeaway was pretty much that we're troubled. We are, the, the State of the Nation is very troubled. Much of her discussion was just the challenges of working in Congress and not being able to get much accomplished, because there's so much fighting between the two parties. One of the things that she did mention, and she helped Foothill Transit obtain $3 million in grant funding for some, a couple of additional buses, electric buses. And this is the most money that the state of California has ever received as far as transportation infrastructure. So you'll see a lot of things happening out on the roadways in California when you're traveling on highways. You'll just see a lot of detours and construction going on, and most of that is because of the monies that have been allocated for infrastructure and transportation. One of the things also that she mentioned is a huge challenge with her district, and of course, throughout the state of California, is just inflation. Nothing seems to be helping inflation. I mean, they keep raising the interest rates, hoping to stabilize inflation, but it's really not making the impact, the dent that they need. So she doesn't see anything in the near future helping to stabilize inflation. So just something that I think we should be mindful of. And then, one last thing was, she spoke about her district, which is out near Whittier, and where else, Brian? I forget.
Eastern, east. Eastern near the center.
Who was this?
It was in Whittier.
No, who was the person that did it?
Linda Sanchez. Her sister, Loretta Sanchez, was also, was she in Congress, I think, also? But she said that, excuse me, the COVID cases are rising, and that they're, she's encouraging all the people in her district and businesses, they're putting out notices saying, you know, "If you're sick, stay home. If you're sick, don't go to work," because a lot of people don't even realize that COVID numbers are, are rising, and that they could possibly have COVID and not just a, a simple cough or cold. But it was interesting. There, most of the people that attended were obviously from her district, but, you know, it was interesting. It was nice to see people I hadn't seen for a very long time. And then mosquito meeting is this week. We've been dark, so I'll bring back information. I haven't heard much about any increase of West Nile virus in our city this month, so that's a good thing. And that's about it.
Great. Thank you. And, yes, just from...
And, yes, just from my end, again, I want to thank our city manager for reminding us of all the events we have going on this month. I do want to just give a shout out to World Journal for that continued partnership. I know we've done it a couple of years now, so I think once you get that opportunity to work together with the same group continuously, it certainly does make things easier, and I hope it's something that our entire community could come out to enjoy. And of course, that leads us up to our marquee celebration of the year, our centennial, which we'll have more information next week, but we've been talking about this a lot, and I know staff has been working very, very hard at making this one extra special. So we certainly want to encourage everyone to keep that weekend open, especially the September 30th. I'm really glad that we're bringing back a parade, just as many of you who was aware our Camellia Parade didn't get their chance to shine this year because of the rain. So this is kind of a way to, I don't want to say make up for it, it is a different celebration, but it certainly gives everyone the opportunity to... Who weren't... Who was looking forward to being in a parade, this is another opportunity for our local groups and students and the Royal Court, and so on and so forth, to participate. I also want to do another shout out to... You mentioned a coffee with the captain. Of course, we're so grateful for our deputies and our great team over at Temple Station. But I also want to give a shout out to Cloverleaf Bakery, Amy and Tech, who've always been wonderful, and making... Just opening their businesses and allowing, you know, not just this event to occur, but I know the Chamber has used their venue even after the hours that they close, which, you know, they open really early. So I just want to thank them for their generosity and willingness to lend such a wonderful space for our community to gather. And of course, wonderful baked goods, coffee, and sandwiches.
And salads now.
And salads. Everyone always forgets that they make great food.
Salads.
And then lastly, I also want another shout out to a local, the Hindu Swaya Savaksang Temple City Chapter. Two weeks ago, I had an opportunity to meet with them at City Hall, and thank you, our city manager also joined us. I know some of us may have met with them in the past. They're kind of a low profile, but they do a lot for the community. They came to celebrate the Hindu Festival of Raksha Badhan, which is a universal oneness day. I believe the actual date was August 30th. And so it was nice of them to kind of just extend a, you know, a warm hand just to us to share that festivities. And I know they meet weekly, I believe, at Livo Park on Sundays in the morning. So they're very... And they're very active also on the school district side in trying to celebrate and recognize great teachers and educators. And I believe they also do a lot of outreach and try to support our sheriffs and fire department as well. So I just want to thank them for reaching out to us and celebrating with us. And with that, we'll move on to our last item, which is a re-sessing to our successor agency. So we will call to order that meeting. Maybe we got a roll call for the successor agency.
Thank you, Mayor. Agency member Sternquist?
Here.
Agency member Viscara?
Here.
Agency member you?
Here.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Here.
Chairman?
Here. Next, we have the consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please?
Agency member Sternquist?
Yes.
Agency member Viscara?
Yes.
Agency member you?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. So we have no unfinished business, no new business, no communications. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, closed public comments. Update from our Executive Director and Agency Counsel? All right, none. Matters from Agency Members? Also, none. We are adjourned from our successor agency, and we return to our regular city council meeting. Additional public comments for the evening? None. So we will close public comments, and we are adjourned for the evening. Have a good night.